Good evening. I'd like to call order the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. If you'd all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rodriguez, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill Della Penia is absent. Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember McCoy?
Present.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Fox?
Here.
Item four is request for or continuance of any public hearing or agenda item, any of those items council would like to call special. Hearing done. Tonight, we're going to deviate from our normal protocol. We normally do the adjournments in memory of members that we've lost in our community at the end of the meeting. Tonight, we have some very special guests, and so we will be doing the adjournment tonight, now, under item four, and then when I adjourn the meeting, I'll reference that again. So tonight, we're adjourning in memory of a celebrated community member, Irish John Gore. John passed away on September 28th. Traditionally, adjournments are in memory of individuals, as I said, or read at the end of the meeting. But again, we're blessed to have John's family here tonight, and so we're doing it at the beginning of the meeting. Irish John Gore was born in Bangor County Down, near Belfast, Northern Ireland, in 1936. In his youth, Irish John was an accomplished soccer player and started his long newspaper career with the local County Down Specter. In 1963, Irish John and his family immigrated to the United States, to Redondo Beach, where he started working with the South Bay Daily Breeze Newspaper. In the early '70s, he was hired by the Thousand Oaks News Chronicle. Those of you who've been in town a long time would remember the News Chronicle, and later went to work for The Hollywood Reporter. In 1977, Irish John Gore became a United States citizen. Irish John spent 48 years in the newspaper business, but his greatest passion was covering the local soccer scene, or football, as he called it, helping launch the American Youth Soccer Organization by coaching boys' and girls' teams. John was an icon in this community. His community service, and most particularly, his ability as a master of ceremonies at so many community events distinguished John really above anyone else in our community. His determination, expressive personality, and distinctive accent were surpassed only by his love and his embrace for his home, the United States of America. Irish John was a genuine community asset for his fundraising abilities for the nonprofits and his dedication to local community service. Irish John was bestowed with many accolades during his life and time here in Thousand Oaks, including but not limited to Chairman and Grand Marshal of the Caneo Valley Days, Ventura County's Man of the Year, Patrick Henry Medal winner, Don Triunfo for Caneo Valley Historical Society, Jacqueline Kennedy Onassis Award for outstanding community service, King of the Mardi Gras Ball for Community Conscious Board, and many, many others. Thousand Oaks Rotary gave Irish John his highest honor with the Paul Harris Fellow Award. He was also devoted to the Thousand Oaks Kiwanis Club, where Irish John served as President and Master of Ceremonies at the International Kiwanis Convention. But his best time may have been giving speeches on St. Patrick's Day about Ireland, always wearing his leprechaun outfit when he did. And finally, ladies and gentlemen, this is a true story. Irish John dearly loved Thousand Oaks. As much as we loved him, he loved Thousand Oaks, and he will be greatly missed by his daughters Karen and Leslie, his wife Suzie, and everyone fortunate enough. And when I say everyone, I'm talking about an awful lot of people in this community that were fortunate enough to know him. So tonight, it's my honor, on behalf of the council, to adjourn this council meeting in memory of Irish John Gore. Let's give John a round of applause, because I know he's in heaven. And with that, we'll move to item five, our special presentations. Give me a moment to go down to the podium. I'd like to invite our library director, Heather Cousin, to the podium. All right. We are fortunate to have two fantastic libraries in Thousand Oaks that are run by Heather and her entire library staff. But these libraries would not be the vibrant community centers they are without the work of the Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library. This committed group of volunteers raises money to support library offerings, such as the Summer Reading and One City One Book programs, and the beautiful Saltwater Aquarium, which, by the way, I was at today with my granddaughter, Isla. And I know all of you will be happy to know that the little blue fish, Dory, is doing fine in the aquarium. This committed group of volunteers raises money to support -- I already said that. Tonight, on behalf of the entire city council, I'm honored to recognize the work of the Thousand Oaks Library volunteers and proclaim October 21st through 28th Friends of the Libraries Week. I encourage all residents to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for the great work that they do in our community. And I'll turn it over now to our library director, Heather Cousin.
Thank you, Mayor Fox, and thank you, members of the council. With me tonight is Dan Ruth. He is a member of the Friends -- the board of the Friends of our library. And what is wonderful about Dan and all of our board members and the members of the Friends of the Library is they not only support all of the great programs that the mayor just spoke of, but last year, they helped us launch our Read to Succeed program, which is an amazing program that the library does in collaboration with the Caneo Unified School District, supporting early literacy for students throughout the Caneo Unified School District. And this year, they are helping us launch a brand-new program called Kinder Grow, which is placing a number of our city staff into kindergarten classrooms also throughout the Caneo Unified School District, which we know are, and we hope, are going to put library cards in the hands of kindergarten students across that school district, not only inspiring them to have that love of reading that we all know is so important, but connecting them with our city staff and with our city and creating that community of readers that we know is so important. And these are the kind of wonderful programs that, yes, as the library and as the city, we are so excited to be able to offer that, but these are the kinds of things that we couldn't do without the support of the Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library. And on behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the mayor and the members of the city council, we just want to thank you, and thank you again in honoring you for National Friends of the Library Week.
And for Heather and the staff, we have a proclamation in honor of National Friends of the Library Week, where I'm presenting on behalf of the council and our community for the great work the Friends of the Library does. So Heather and Friends, congratulations. Great job. Next, I'd like to invite up to the podium, Cassenia Andrich.
Hi.
Okay. Wish Ms. Bill Della Penia was here to see me say that. You don't do well for that. Cassenia is the co-chair of the Maternal Health Mental Health Coalition of Ventura County. Ms. Andrich, organization works throughout Ventura County to promote family wellness and provide support to grieving parents who have lost a child. As a sign of our support, Thousand Oaks is proclaiming the month of October as the Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Ms. Andrich, please accept this proclamation and tell us more about your program and all the great work that you do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for having me. Really, it's an honor to be here. I am a co-chair of the Maternal Mental Health Coalition of Ventura County. We are a tiny, little, all-volunteer nonprofit organization, few women that are just trying to really raise awareness and provide education and advocacy for maternal and really parental wellness. One of the families in our community that are the most vulnerable are the families that have lost a pregnancy or a baby. One in four women will experience miscarriage, and there are many families in our county that experience fetal demise, stillbirth, or infant loss. I also -- my day job is I work as a social worker in a hospital, and I see many of these families, and we provide care for them in the hospitals, and I feel that we can come a long way of doing that in the hospitals. But once the family leave, they really are kind of left alone with their grief, because in our community, we do not have proper services where we can create ways for them to share about their grief, to heal, to connect. So this is where we are. I really appreciate you all for allowing for this time, because this is how we begin. We begin with coming together, acknowledging the families, their grief, and by really starting to create space, sacred space and time, for them to share and heal. And we really can do much better, and it starts with all of us. So I really appreciate you, and thank you for pronouncing my name so well. Thank you all.
So let me present this proclamation, and just again, for the community's awareness. There's estimated 1,500 miscarriages, 40 fetal demises, and 41 infant deaths in Ventura County last year. That's a lot of sorrow and a lot of grief for a lot of folks, and no parent should be left alone, isolated, and supported in this tremendous time of need. And this organization and the folks that are there are there for these very, very special families. So it's my honor to present this proclamation to you and your entire organization. Thanks for the great work.
Thank you.
We will now move to item number six. That's our public comment. Ms. Rodriguez, could you call public comment, please?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. We have one individual who has presented cards. And pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our first and only speaker is Dan Tweet. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to thank mayor, council members, everyone participating in the forum tonight. I know on the agenda tonight is the ad hoc report on homelessness, and I read it online and noticed that it might have left out some resources that are available, like the 211 phone system, which is available not only in this country but in Canada. It's especially reserved by the FCC to provide human services, and maybe since it's run by the United Way, there might have been some "not invented here" kind of sentiment as to not incorporating that into the homelessness item. But there's another comment on homelessness that you may recognize, which I hope will fall within my time, and it goes as follows. Not like the brazen giant of Greek fame, with conquering limbs astride from land to land, here at our seawashed sunset gate shall stand a mighty woman with a torch whose flame is the imprisoned lightning, and her name, Mother of Exiles. From her beacon hand glows worldwide welcome. Her mild eyes command the air-bridged harbor the twin cities frame. Keep ancient lands, your storied pomp cries she with silent lips. Give me, you're tired, you're poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless, tempest tossed to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door.
That concludes our public comments, and we will move to item seven. That's the consent calendar. Any items council would like to call special? Hearing done. Mr. Price?
7G.
Any others? All right, Mr. Price, you want to move the balance of the consent calendar?
I would move the balance of the consent calendar.
All right, Mr. Price moves. Any discussion on that? Hearing done. Prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Bill Della Penia absent.
And that is approved. Mr. Price, item 7G.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just pulled this simply so that I could speak just a little bit about it. I think this is a long time coming. This is a project that was started some time ago when we were looking at ways to use the groundwater that has been building up beneath us for many, many years. This is a great project that will hopefully get us closer to being able to provide all the water needed at our Los Robles Greens Golf Course from groundwater instead of using the potable water that we purchased. So I just want to highlight that and thank staff for all the hard work in getting to this point. And I know that one of the things that we are seeking in order to accomplish this is funding from the state through the state water project, and that will be just a tremendous asset to our community. It will -- it's estimated that that well beneath the golf course there might be able to provide as much as 10% of the city's water. So that's a significant amount. Thank you. And with that, I would move 7G.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Price, for calling that out. It is important. Mr. Price moves 7G. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Prepare the vote.
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Bill Della Penia absent.
That is approved. Mr. Price, do you have any additional comments to follow? Okay, all right. We moved to item eight. That's our public hearings. Madam Clerk, could you call item 8A for public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding municipal code amendment regarding licensing and operating regulations for taxicabs. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Toto, you going to handle the report tonight?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Fox, and council members. I'm here alongside Emma Mossberg, an assistant analyst in the Finance Department, and Police Chief Tim Hagel to propose an amendment to the taxicab ordinance. California has long required that cities and counties adopt an ordinance or resolution regulating taxicabs in their respective jurisdictions. As part of their taxicab programs, most cities require a permit to pick up passengers within their boundaries. Since most taxicabs operate in multiple cities, taxicab drivers and companies are often required to obtain multiple permits. The city's current ordinance requires background checks, drug testing, meter certification, vehicle inspection, and insurance. Since each city has varied requirements for permits, you can see how this might be burdensome on the taxi companies and drivers. The ride-sharing industry came along this decade and disrupted the traditional taxicab industry. The ride-sharing industry is regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, and until 2017, cities had no authority over the companies or their drivers. Even now, after the passage of SB 182 last year, the only thing the city can require is a business tax certificate from drivers who reside in that city. Other than completing a form and paying a tax, there are no other regulations for the ride-sharing drivers. As you can see here, the number of taxicab permits issued in the city is less than half of what it was in 2013, and the numbers are steadily declining. So the taxicab industry lobbied state legislature to help create a more of a level playing field as far as the regulatory process is concerned. AB 1069 was passed in 2017, and a cleanup bill, AB 939, was signed by the governor last month and goes into effect on January 1st of 2019. Although the state has always required cities to have ordinances or resolutions in place to regulate taxicabs, it had not been updated since 1995 and was somewhat vague, leaving most of the regulatory decisions to the cities. The new law modernizes the regulations, contains more specific requirements, and most importantly, provides taxicab companies and drivers some reprieve. It requires taxicab companies and drivers to obtain a license or permit only in the city or county in which they are most substantially located, which will be determined by utilizing trip data provided by the taxicab companies. So this new law does make law enforcement a little -- make enforcement a little bit more challenging. Currently, if a passenger is picked up in Thousand Oaks, TOPD can identify the taxicab as properly permitted by a city-issued decal placed in a specific position on the vehicle, and the driver by a permit affixed to the dashboard. Under the new law, this is not the case. They must have a license with at least one city in the county or the county of Ventura itself, but other cities don't necessarily issue decals or similar permits. So staff has been working with other cities in the county to try to bring some consistency to our permitting processes. We've recently shared this proposed ordinance with several cities in hopes that they will adopt similar regulations and therefore make it easier to identify properly licensed taxicabs operating in our city. The ordinance that is being introduced tonight maintains much of the regulatory process currently in place, but brings us into compliance with state law. There were regulations added that are now required by state law, such as DMV poll notices and mandatory training. But the most significant change to the ordinance relates to the requirement of a permit to taxicabs only if they are substantially located in Thousand Oaks. So staff is requesting you consider this ordinance, and we are available for any questions.
All right. Questions for staff on this item? No questions. We do have one speaker card according to this?
Just got it.
Okay. Miguel Orsorio? Okay, there we go. Mr. Sir, move over to the other mic. There you go. Much better.
Good evening, everybody. This is about this ordinance about taxicabs. I'm okay on these regulations, but many Uber drivers do the same and now just losing. So if you goes to the hotels, everybody pickups by Uber Nova taxicabs and lose jobs. And they, we need taxicabs pay for plates, license plates, commercial plates for a taxi, a metered taxi, weight and measures are the -- and mentura, but Uber not pay anything. They don't pay anything, and it steal our jobs. I give an exemplar today. I don't took any customers from the hotel to pick my customers. So I need to support my family, support my license plate, and survive. This is ridiculous to accept Ubers in Thousand Oaks. I recommend they out of Thousand Oaks, because it's not fair. Okay? This is my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment cards on this item. Any questions for staff? Chief Hagel, did you have any comments? I noticed you were down here listed. Any commentary?
No, it's self-explanatory, and this is just more of a regulatory cleanup.
Okay, very good. All right, Mr. Price. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will entertain a motion. Mr. Price?
Yes, I'm going to move staff's recommendation on 8A.
All right, Mr. Price moves 8A. Any discussion on his motion? Hearing done. Prepare the vote. Mr. Adam?
I just, I fail to see exactly how this web of regulations and ordinances levels the playing field between the taxi drivers and Uber, frankly. It seems to me that it really makes it worse, but it is state-mandated, so I suppose we have to go along with it, but I'm not quite sure the intentions were carried out.
All right. Any further discussion? I would just, my comment would just before we vote is that, you know, we're in an evolving economy, and sometimes when somebody comes up with a better business model, it affects other businesses, and that doesn't mean there isn't some unintended consequences or other issues. And I see that the world of Uber and Lyft and Taxi and all that stuff has dramatically changed over the last several years, and I would expect that there be other changes in the industry as well. Mr. Price, any following comments?
No, I would certainly echo the comments of the mayor and Mr. Adam, that I know that other cities have struggled with this, particularly those larger cities that have rather robust taxicab services. New York City dealt with this many, many years ago, and it is a difficult time for those in the taxi business. That would be it.
All right. Ms. Rodriguez, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Bill Della Penia absent, and I do have an ordinance title to read into the record. Ordinance amending the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, repealing in its entirety Title IV, Chapter II, and adding Title IV, Chapter II, adopting licensing and operating regulations for taxicabs.
Thank you, and that motion is approved. We'll move to item 8B. That also is a public hearing. 8B is a wastewater and water rate fee adjustments. Believe you're going to hear good news. It's going lower, so that's good. And with that, Ms. Rodriguez, could you open item 8B for public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B regarding water and wastewater rate and fee adjustments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
All right. Mr. Spurgeon, give us the good news.
Indeed, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and council. This is a two-part presentation. We're adopting ordinances to raise our connection fees by an inflationary adjustment factor, which we do every year, and that's for both water and wastewater. These are fees charged to new development and new connections to our water and wastewater systems. Additionally, we are going to propose a water rate reduction, and I'll get to that in a minute. So first, the connection fees. As I mentioned, every year, we adjust those by the inflationary increase. This year, it happens to be 2.6%. That's based on a construction index. So you see here wastewater connection fee will be raised to 8446 per connection, and our connection fee compared to others in our region, you see that we're fairly kind of middle of the pack here. So I think that that's a good thing. Water additionally, the connection fee raised by that same 2.6%, and you see that would go to 8591, and the comparison here, not quite the middle, but certainly competitive with other agencies in terms of that fee. So water rate adjustments. In 2017, city council approved a 4% per year increase in water rates for 2018 and 2019. Tonight, we are requesting approval to lower the rates in 2019 by 1.4%, so that would then lower it down to a 2.6% increase instead of the 4% increase. Reason for that is when we were projecting costs Reason for that is when we were projecting costs for our water fund in 2017, we used this chart, which is provided to us by our imported water providers, Metropolitan and Callejas, and we had assumed for 2019 that imported water rates would go up 4.8%. They actually went up only 2.2%. So you see the difference in the numbers. We actually pay $1,562, or will be paying $1,562 per acre foot of imported water. The reason for this is that there's been some changes in, at Metropolitan in terms of the treatment plant where our water is treated, that's the Jensen Water Treatment Plant, that had considerably excess capacity that were, still had to be maintained. They have actually downscaled that plant, so those costs have actually gone down. The state water project costs this past year also went down. Revenues from electricity generated at Hoover Dam actually went up, so that's kind of an offset there. And then finally, we had, we did have a wetter winter, it wasn't a real wet winter, but that allowed for Metropolitan to not have to go out and purchase more expensive supplemental water. So all of that together is the reasons for the lower increase. So we're, you can see here that the quantity rates are what we're proposing to adjust by a nine cent per unit factor. That's the difference in those, the imported water pass-through costs. And then how that would affect a single-family residential using different levels of water, kind of low, average, and high. You can see overall, there's a percent change, and over again, for the entire system, it's about a 1.4% decrease in water rates for 2019. So that's really good news. You can see that we're still pretty competitive in terms of a typical monthly single-family water bill, as shown in the, here in this slide. And that's it. So this is the public hearing, and appreciate any questions you may have, and our recommendations to adopt those, the ordinances to make those changes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Questions for staff? All right, hearing done. We have no speaker cards in this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain discussion or motion. Somebody, please press the button. Okay, it's not coming up. Mr. Adam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, this is a tough one. But after much soul searching, no, I'm kidding, it's great to lower rates for our residents for water, and naturally, I'll move that we do just that with 8B.
And Mr. Adam moves. Any further discussion? He moves staff recommendation. Any further discussion on the motion? I think I would be remiss. First, I would remind the community, this is not necessarily a trend that you're going to see all the time. As Mr. Spurgeon pointed out, there's a variety of factors that went into this, but I would be remiss if I didn't point out to the community that you would have to look long and hard at any city in California, certainly, maybe the country, but certainly in California, that takes an opportunity, first through transparency, of how we arrive at these fees, and then secondly, seeing an opportunity to, while not huge, return some of the money back to the folks. It is a big deal, and I would suggest it is a rarity. And again, I want to emphasize, it's not something that if I was a water rate payer, which I am, and big lot, I've said it over the years, so I get the water bill, they're high, because I pay it, but an opportunity to send some money back to the folks, modest as it may be, I think is something that we want to just acknowledge our staff and the good work. Many cities would have just simply put it into reserves, which some would argue that's not necessarily a bad idea, but this recommendation is coming in front of the council, and I think it's something that certainly everybody that's on city water will support. So with that, Ms. Rodriguez, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Bill De La Penya absent, and I have two ordinance titles to read. Ordinance adjusting and setting rates and fees for the City Water Division, uncodified, and ordinance adjusting and setting rates, fees, and discharge limits at the City Wastewater Division, uncodified.
All right, that is approved. I think I just want to note, for those of you that may be wondering, Miss Bill De La Penya, is my understanding, got caught up in the plane crash incident on the 101 freeway. She obviously wasn't in the plane, but there's tremendous traffic, and it's just very, very difficult to get out here in Thousand Oaks. Those that have family that are traveling would recognize that, so I know she's going to do her level best to get her as soon as she can. With that, we're going to move to item 9A. That's the ad hoc city council homeless committee report, and Ms. Hardy, you're going to handle that report? Good evening.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor Fox and members of the city council. Tonight, I'm here to present to you an update on the council ad hoc committee on homelessness. The city council has identified addressing homelessness as a top priority. A council ad hoc committee comprised of Mayor Pro Tem Rob McCoy and Councilmember Bill De La Penya was formed in February of this year. Over the last several months, the ad hoc committee has had the opportunity to better understand the various facets of homelessness in Thousand Oaks. Tonight's forthcoming report and recommendations reflect the city's potential initial response to this highly complex issue. Homelessness throughout the United States continues to grow and is considered a nationwide humanitarian crisis. Communities across the country are grappling with how best to address the rising homeless population. After steady declines in homelessness, the number of people without homes in California has risen for three consecutive years. Ventura County has experienced a steady decline since 2012 until the most recent point-in-time count of 1,299, which is a 12.8% increase. Thousand Oaks currently has less than 6% of the county's total homeless population. According to the League of California City's Homeless Task Force Report, field experts indicate that people without housing is actually three to four times higher than the point-in-time count. In fact, Lutheran Social Services and our police department estimate higher numbers locally at approximately 245. While oftentimes homelessness is characterized one dimensionally, locally, our vulnerable populations fit a range of demographics, and the issue presents itself in many forms. The National Coalition for the Homeless identify the leading causes of homelessness as lack of affordable housing, poverty, lack of affordable healthcare, domestic violence, mental illness, and addiction. Further, California is home to 21 of the 30 most expensive rental markets in the nation. The issue of access to affordable housing exists in every county throughout the state. Additionally, the number of psychiatric beds available statewide have decreased by 30%. Lutheran Social Services has also noted that locally inadequate retirement is a cause of homelessness, as well as young people transitioning out of foster care without a safety net. The ad hoc committee received information from staff and local service providers that can be categorized into these four focus areas. These areas have unique impacts and challenges associated with them. First is panhandling and loitering. While Thousand Oaks has a relatively small population of panhandlers, the visibility of individuals' panhandling and loitering has increased. The solicitation of funds is a form of speech and has First Amendment and California constitutional protections. Regulating panhandling is difficult because enforcement must be related to an individual's conduct and not the content. When PD is able to use enforcement due to an individual's behavior, such as blocking a sidewalk or traffic, they will certainly enforce. Otherwise, the police department and social service providers are working to connect these individuals to appropriate resources and services. As the public health, environmental, and public safety concerns regarding homelessness grow, the pressure from residents and businesses on local governments to do more also increases. Businesses and public agencies are incurring costs as they try to mitigate the impacts and effects. Mitigation and enforcement are particularly challenging amongst an ever-evolving legal landscape. Just last month, the Martin versus City of Boise case has significantly impacted what actions a city can take to respond to sleeping outdoors or in vehicles. Essentially, the court indicated that if there's no options for sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter. Municipalities can still regulate the use of public spaces, but restrictions must have a nexus to a very important governmental interest in public health and safety. The Thousand Oaks Police Department is a key resource. They are interacting and assisting the homeless on a daily basis. Due to the increased need to ensure public safety and a timely response, the department was able to repurpose its resources to commit one deputy to work full-time with the homeless population. Known as the vulnerable populations officer, this officer assists the homeless population in connecting to local resources, including housing, addiction, mental health services, and other critical social services. Pairing up police officers with social workers and other key providers is a strategy that has been effective in municipalities. Currently, PD is also looking at adding a social worker from Ventura County Behavioral Health to accompany them in order to provide additional resources and assistance. Finally, just recently, the fire department began tracking incidents with possible homeless individuals to determine service gaps and impacts. Since this program is new, we do not yet have baseline data. The committee engaged in dialogue and received information from several organizations that provide services, programs, and our funding to assist the homeless population. Local programs and its services include affordable housing, mills, case management, resource referral, laundry, shelter, grant programs, and vouchers. Last but certainly not least, in addition to the direct services provided by local providers, the city and local nonprofits work with the Ventura County Continuum of Care. The Continuum of Care is a regional planning body for homeless service, services. The COC collaborates with city partners, nonprofit organizations, housing developers and providers, law enforcement, healthcare, and business partners to coordinate services and track data. I also just want to mention that during the public comment, we had a speaker indicate that we did not mention the 211 as part of the report this evening, and the report just covered the organizations that provided updates and information to the council, and it was more of a focus effort. But we just want to recognize that we do value and appreciate the service that 211 provides to our community, and as the council is aware, we also contribute funding to that critical service for Thousand Oaks residents. As previously stated, the recommendations tonight reflect the city's initial response to addressing homelessness in Thousand Oaks. It is important to note that while many cities across the state and the nation are experiencing increased homeless numbers, each city is unique and may be at very different stages in addressing homelessness within their community. Our goal is to balance public safety, legal obligations, and maintain a high quality of life in Thousand Oaks. While gaps can exist in national and state programs that are addressing homelessness, local governments are coming together to work towards responses designed for individual communities. Collaboration, cooperation, and support at the local level are key to addressing this crisis. In the spirit of collaboration and coordination, the Ventura City County Managers Group created a regional memorandum of understanding to address homelessness through regional cooperation. To date, the cities of Ventura, Oxnard, and the county of Ventura have adopted the MOU. While not binding, the MOU asks that we all commit to developing strategies to address homelessness, actively participate in the coordinated entry system, pursue permanent housing units to serve our most vulnerable populations, and to condition entities receiving funding to participate in the homeless management information system. Because homelessness is a highly complex national humanitarian crisis, there are misperceptions and misinformation that could hinder and cloud how a community responds to homelessness. Our recommendation is to develop and implement a comprehensive public outreach and education campaign. Through outreach and education efforts, we hope to open the lines of communication, engage in two-way dialogue, reach a cross-section of stakeholders, and help others understand the city's legal role. In addition, we can inform our community on their important role and how they can help, for example, handing up and not handing out, or giving to social service organizations instead of panhandlers. State and federal governments offer multiple funding sources to address homelessness. Most recently, the state of California has made one-time funding available in the amount of $4.8 million to Ventura County to provide homeless services. In order for a service provider to be eligible for funding, the local jurisdiction must declare a shelter crisis. As such, we are asking the city council to adopt the declaration this evening so that local providers can access this one-time funding. The Ventura County Continuum of Care is coordinating the application, and they will make funding decisions at their November 14th meeting. Another key funding source for our local service providers to offer services for those that are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless is our community is the Community Development Block Grant, as well as the Social Services Endowment Fund. Continuing to fund these programs will provide much-needed dollars in our community. And again, I just want to emphasize, the reason for declaring the shelter crisis is solely administrative, and it is to make funding available to the providers in Thousand Oaks. Staff recommends developing standard response procedures, working collaboratively with local agencies such as CRPD and COSCA, and ensuring regular communication amongst all who are working with vulnerable populations to provide consistency, enhance communication, and ensure everyone is doing their part to provide safe, sanitary, and accessible public spaces. Additionally, staff recommends improving environmental design in areas prone to homeless encampments and loitering to mitigate the impacts to these spaces. This can include redesigning seating areas, trimming landscape and raising tree canopies, and replacing turf and mulch. Again, California is one of the most expensive places to live in the country. This action item on housing is to encourage the inclusion of more affordable housing in future residential projects to help address the housing crisis locally. And finally, our recommendations cover administrative actions. The action items within this recommendation allow the city to maximize the use of existing resources and have a greater focus on developing and strengthening the city's response. This includes continuing to periodically meet with the ad hoc committee through June of next year, convening a local consortium of stakeholders on a periodic basis, and aligning and coordinating the city's efforts and responses. This concludes my presentation for this evening. Before we open up for questions, I would like to thank Councilmember Bill De La Penya, who's not here just yet, as well as Mayor Pro Tem Rob McCoy for all the time that you've spent with staff and delving into this very complex issue. We also have a number of city staff that are here this evening from Public Works, the police department, the library, also the Ventura County Continuum of Care that are available to answer any questions the city council may have. And with that, I just wanted one more time emphasize that this is the initial response, and we are looking at localized responses that will work, that we believe will be helpful in addressing this issue in Thousand Oaks. Thank you. And I'll turn it over. And I'll turn it over to...
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Ad hoc.
Let me ask Mr. McCoy, if he's the one member of the committee that's here, if he has any additional comments.
Well, I would just, first of all, thank Ms. Hardy for all the wonderful work, and Mr. Spurgeon, Chief Hagel, especially Officer Cortez. What this city does is remarkable, and I believe we're in front of this at the moment, but we have to be diligent in order to not get behind it. This is a deeper issue than any of us could have imagined. I stepped into it with a bit of ignorance, that my eyes were opened, especially after talking with Denise in relation to, I meant Officer Cordoba, Denise Cortez, excuse me, with Lutheran Social Services. There's a complexity to it, and one of the reasons why Councilmember Bill de la Peña and myself want to continue with this ad hoc, excuse me, is because we want to dig down to see, are we addressing the symptoms or the problem? And there's so much more to look at in relation to that. So we're looking forward to more meetings and, well, meetings, but to understand this issue in a greater capacity. One thing I'd like to emphasize, especially the council and all the citizens of our community, giving to panhandlers is not helpful. It's just that simple. It is not helpful. To refer them to the social services that we have here and the numerous opportunities that they have, it alleviates the problem, because if we give to the panhandlers, the study has proven that it is not helpful to the problem itself. So we're going to do our best to educate the community in relation to that. And council, if you have any questions, anything we can answer for you, but there's a lot more work to be done. But thank you for all your diligence and your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Mr. Adams, questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McCoy and Councilmember Bill de la Peña for serving on the committee. These things take a lot of work, a lot of time. Appreciate your service on that. And thank you, Ingrid and Chief Hagel and everybody else. I did have a question for Chief Hagel, and it's kind of a follow-up that Councilmember McCoy talked about, which is giving money to panhandlers. Our census said there's about 80 homeless people in Thousand Oaks. Your VPO officer said there's a couple of hundreds, so it's somewhere between 80 and a couple of hundred. And I would suspect that a large number of them are, in fact, panhandlers. So let me pose this question to you. If by some magic means we could, our citizens would just completely stop giving money to panhandlers, which we wish they would, but they don't, because I've seen them in person give money to panhandlers. If that were to happen, instead give to charities and Lutheran Social Services and their churches and things like that, if that were to happen, how much would that, in your opinion, alleviate this problem?
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Basically, you nailed it on the head. Providing money to panhandlers blatantly is contributing to their possible substance abuse and actually worsening their condition. We have an incredible group of nonprofit organizations in the Cano Valley that are there to help them. You know, many of the calls we receive, in fact, the vast majority, people rarely call about someone that they see, you know, sleeping in a car, that does occur, but the vast majority, maybe 80%, are about the people, panhandlers. It's right in your face, and you're seeing it. However, we have homeless people that you never see, who are receiving help from LSS and our faith-based community on a daily basis, and they need money and support to help these people. So if you think about the homelessness problem globally or at 30,000 feet, we need to work with all the cities around the county and in the state, again, this crisis declaration, but the quick fixes we can make right here in our community is to stop giving them money now. For every dollar you give, you're contributing to substance abuse.
Well, I think you're absolutely right. And if there's one lesson to be learned from this committee and this exercise tonight is to do just that. Don't give money to panhandlers. I know you're well-intentioned when you do, and they can tug on your heartstrings with the signs they put up, but it doesn't help. It hurts the situation. Give it to your church, give it to your Lutheran Social Services, and that's the best way to help these folks. And just another quick question, and you and I talked about this. A lot of our churches and synagogues and mosques keep their facilities open during the winter for homeless folks, which I think is great. Would you say that there's a potential for these facilities to stay open year-round, and that that could also help alleviate the problem?
I guess that's contemporary perfect for what this project is tonight, is that currently in the Cano Valley, from December through April, our faith-based organizations think of LSS like the conductor. And then you have all your different faith-based churches, temples, mosques, providing care for anywhere from 30 to 80 people a night from December to April. But come April 1, they're out of resources, and they're done. So the bigger question is, what's going on from April 2 to, you know, November 31, or do the math right there? And they are pushed back out to the street, and this further exacerbates the problem because many will switch to panhandling then to get money to seek shelter in a hotel and such. So any support we can give to these organizations, they do an incredible job, and any support we can give to them will actually help the problem.
Thank you, Chief Hagel. Yeah, that would be another thing that I would hope that somehow we could either help fund or help push along would be to keep the faith-based organizations open year-round. I myself have served in our church to stay overnight with some of the homeless people. But again, it's just those three or four months, and then out they go. So it'd be great if somehow we could keep these organizations open. But it's going to take money, like everything else, and that's going to be the sticking point. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate those answers.
Mr. Price?
Thank you. So, and thank you for bringing up the money that's involved in it. I want to get a better understanding of the funding streams. It's my understanding that the money trickles from the federal government down to the state through the county. And by taking the action that's being proposed tonight, that will make us eligible to receive additional funding to combat the problem? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
And I know I'll just jump in because I see our partner, Tara Caruth, with the county CEO's office in Continuum of Care, who has a very strong grip on the various funding streams, especially the one that's most prudent to other discussion this evening.
Is it not on?
It is now.
Okay. Tara Caruth, I work out of the county executive office and manage the Continuum of Care program. The state funding, the homeless emergency aid program funding, is passed from the state to local continuums of care. The county is going to serve as the administrative entity to disperse that funding. The Continuum of Care released an application last month and closed that application cycle. The Continuum of Care Board is going to make funding decisions November 14. And we have multiple county-wide, as well as city-specific, applications that have been received so far.
And the money that the state is making available, does that, is that state money? Or is that...
Yes, it is state money. It was money that came from the surplus, the state surplus. The governor passed that in June. The money will start flowing as soon as the Continuum of Care submits that application, probably six to eight weeks following. So we anticipate at the first of the year. It is around $4.8 million for Ventura County, which is significantly more than we receive in HUD funding through the Continuum of Care, and is intended to serve needs related to unsheltered homelessness. So emergency shelters and other resources that can help people.
And is that one-time money? Or is that...
It is one-time money. So that makes it a little complicated with how you fund, make funding recommendations so that you aren't leaving a jurisdiction with a big funding gap.
Right. And you mentioned HUD.
Yes.
And last March, when I was in DC, we had a meeting with the folks from HUD, and they encouraged us to work closely with our county Continuum of Care folks. And I hope that, I know that we have been doing that.
Yes.
But I'm anxious to perhaps see what impact some of the funding can do here in the city of Thousand Oaks. In addition to that, the CDBG funding that the cities get is constantly under attack. We thought for sure that it was going to go away completely a year ago, but we fought that back, and hopefully we won't have to fight that fight year after year. But do you get any of that money as well?
The county also receives CDBG home and ESG, which is Emergency Solutions Grant funding. That funding comes through the county in three different ways. Through the city of Oxnard, the county sometimes gets it off and on, and then the Continuum of Care manages that funding also that passes through, through the state. The state funding is intended for jurisdictions that don't get an emergency solutions allocation. So Thousand Oaks is one of the communities, and LSS receives a grant from the state Emergency Solutions Grant. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Maybe if I, if I may, because I think the council is aware, I actually sit on the Continuum of Care Board representing one of the East County seats, along with Michael Nye from the Area Housing Authority, representing Thousand Oaks. What's been fascinating for me is to learn about the consistent refinements that are taking place, especially with these federal funds, in terms of strings and restrictions around that. Could you very briefly, Tara, explain to the council and to the community how these funds are being further and further restricted to effectuate very certain types of uses, and how the Continuum of Care has been focused on that?
Yes, so each funding source is eligible for specific activities. So for example, the Continuum of Care funding, where it used to fund transitional housing programs, it now can only fund rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing. So Lutheran Social Services rapid rehousing is a short-term to medium-term rental assistance in case management, and then Mini Mansions receives funding for the supportive housing programs. So those programs, it can only fund permanent housing. The real emphasis is around housing first, moving people as quickly as possible, or as quickly as possible into permanent housing. And then all of those funding sources are tied to very, very high bars for performance. If programs aren't high-performing, people aren't staying housed, aren't being housed quickly, the Continuum of Care is tasked with reallocating underperforming projects and funding high-performing.
So I get that it's important to get people into housing, into shelter, and that's key. But how much of that money is going toward the underlying issues, and in many cases, mental health issues?
Right. A lot of our Continuum of Care supportive housing is tied to housing projects that are also funded with Mental Health Services Act funding, which is the Millionaire's Tax, the behavioral health. So there are a lot of partnering funding sources together to try to meet the needs of specific populations. But there is very little of the HUD funding that is dedicated towards the more emergency, short-term solutions to get people off the streets. HUD is not directly said, but has said through continuums of care that they're looking to local jurisdictions to make decisions about how to address those needs. So the funding keeps slowly shifting away from emergency solutions and focused more on housing.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know one of the programs was successful in Los Angeles, and this is probably going to be directed more toward Chief Hagel and perhaps you as well, but was the Smart Teams. And I'm sure you're familiar with that, where they partner police officers with somebody from the county mental health department. And they did a real good job. And I know we're not doing that now, but it sounds like that's something that we're have an eye toward?
Yes, that's correct. Right now, county behavioral health is working diligently, and the blueprint right now, we're hoping, if everything goes through with their grant alignments, is by the end of November and in the first week of December, which is great, because as the weather changes, we'll have a behavioral health specialist. They specialize in dealing with all of these consequences of people being unhomeless, partnered up with our officers we see up here tonight. And we will be sharing them with the city of Simi Valley and with Camrio, and they'll actually work a schedule. So they'll probably work one to two days a week with our officers that are full-time right out here. So it's going to bring case management right to the person.
Yeah, those programs are great, because many times the families are the ones making those phone calls, and you're getting in on the front end of something and preventing what could become a tragedy. So I sure hope that that works out, and that we can maybe build on that program, and to have it as, if not a full-time, but maybe more than two, two days a week. But I'm sure that you will want to do that as well, so.
Absolutely.
I think that's it. Thank you.
The, yeah, before we have a one speaker, one speaker, but I just, more of a comment than a question. And it's good that we are leaning forward on this, has been commented on. As Ms. Hardy pointed out, it's a complex issue, but as I sit here today and looking at some of the data, it's very manageable right now. And not to sound like a broken record, but I'm getting towards the end of my tenure here, but I want to strongly encourage the council and the staff, this isn't one we want to get wrong. And as Mr. Price points out, having worked almost four decades in the city of Los Angeles, most of that time in the inner city, I've seen firsthand the impacts of homelessness. And as the chief points out, it isn't just not a place that you don't have a home, it's frequently mixed with issues of substance abuse, mental health issues. That being said, in some cities, it's beyond management. There's nothing the local jurisdiction could really do absent a tremendous amount of federal assets and state assets. We're not in that situation here in Thousand Oaks, or really in Ventura County, looking into numbers. But it's something that, along with the boulevard and undergrounding and the Rams and all the things that are important, this is an important issue, and it goes to the quality of life, not just in Thousand Oaks, but in many other cities. And it's something that, again, it's within our grasp to manage it, but it will take diligence, and it will take rolling up your sleeves and working at this for probably many years. But it's something that is important to the community, and it's humane, it's the right thing to do. That's for sure. Each one of these individuals, in most cases, they're human beings, and for a variety of reasons, we've got reports, found themselves in very difficult situations. And so to some degree, it's our responsibility to figure out a way to, you're not going to solve it, but certainly to manage it in a humane and loving way. So that would be my comment there. Ms. Bill de la Peña, I let him know you got stuck in the, in the plane crash traffic. So we're on the homeless issue. Did you have any, you know, follow-up comments?
Yes, actually, I would want to chime in. And yeah, it took me four and a half hours to get from Westlake to Calabasas and back. It was crazy. But this obviously is very, very important. I want to say that in the last seven months or so, staff has done a wonderful job bringing everybody up to date. And the product you have here before you tonight basically is a template for, and a plan, a proposal for the next few years even. What is mildly important is that people understand we can't just round up homeless people, put them in a van, and ship them out. That just doesn't happen. I know there are some who think, you know, they cannot camp in open space, we're going to have, we have to get them and get them out of here. As you already probably have heard, tonight, we have to follow the law. This is a very complex issue, and the first thing we need to do is to reach out to all the residents here and the businesses, because we need buy-in from the residents and businesses, and we also need feedback from the residents and businesses and the faith-based community. So I'm actually very excited to bring forth with Mayor Pro Tem McCoy what is really a first step toward managing homelessness in Thousand Oaks.
We do have one speaker card, Denise Cortez.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I just, my name is Denise Cortez, and I am currently the Director for Lutheran Social Services here in Ventura County. And I'm only here tonight because I really want to say how much I appreciate... And I'm only here tonight because I really want to say how much I appreciate the work of Mr. McCoy and Councilmember de La Pena. I think it's so important, and I just want to say that your study of and your work on the homeless crisis here in Thousand Oaks is so important to those of us who work among them. Mayor Fox said something about them being a human being. And one of the things that I think a lot of people don't know, every week in our office, I personally get phone calls from mothers of some of our substance abusers out on the street, mothers and fathers, great aunts of these kids who, these older people just are sick and can't sleep well at night and are wondering about the whereabouts of their kid. And they just want to call to make sure that I've seen them lately, that I know that they're alive. And so these are very deep-rooted family issues that impact so many people in so many ways. It's a crisis. Homelessness is definitely a crisis that's indeed worthy of our time spent learning more about it, its causes and its terrible consequences. It is certainly deserving of the meaningful conversation that's been had around the issue and what significant steps we can take to mediate the problem. I also want to say something about the county. Tara Carruth, she was talking about the Rapid Rehousing Grant, and we do get that at LSS currently. And since July of 2017, we have housed 89 individuals since July of 2017. So it's pretty, our collaboration with the county and with the police and with Ventura County Behavioral Health and with the city is so crucial and amazing things happen when we join forces. It's quite remarkable. So again, I just want to say thank you and thank you to Ms. Hardy for all the diligent work that you did on this ad hoc committee. So thank you.
Denise?
Mr. McCoy.
I just, I wanted to say thank you to you. You're a bridge builder. Obviously, when you're dealing with the homelessness situation in the city, the folks that don't like to see the homelessness are going to be after you. And then the folks that don't think you do enough are going to be after you. And then you're contending with the county as money goes up, it trickles down, everybody puts their hands on it, has an agenda on it, and what's left over ends up with you, which is a pittance. And you are a pit bull. You're tenacious. And my eyes were open, especially the one insight that you had brought to one of the meetings, that the homelessness issue in our community, people think it's folks coming from out of town. These are local folks. Tell them the story, if you would, briefly about the Eagle Scout graduated from one of our high schools here.
We have a young man who panhandles. You probably see him every day. The police know him well. And he's actually a really good guy, but he was a football player at one of our local high schools. And he got a back injury in his senior year playing football, was planning to play college football. He got a back injury and he ended up getting addicted to pain meds. And he has never been sober since. And his parents actually had to move out of town because nobody wants to be the mom or dad of the town drunk. And so that's important. Can I say one more thing about panhandling? Chief Hagel always just tells such great stories about it. And we are really, we try every way we can to get people to stop giving to panhandlers. But I want to say that it's a wider issue than substance abuse. I say to our clients who are homeless and panhandling, I don't accuse anyone of being a substance abuser. The bottom line is this, no one who's panhandling got into this situation by handling money wisely. That's the bottom line, and it is true of every single one of them. So it's not about what they'll do with the money, it's the fact that they've never, they don't have a history of using it wisely. So I beg people to give their dollars to agencies that will be really intentional about the way we use those dollars. So thank you again.
All right, this is a departmental report with a series of recommendations. We have no more speaker cards on this, and so we can entertain a motion on this item. Ms. Bill de La Pena.
Thank you. Well, my recommendation would be, as I hope, I'm sure Mayor Potem McCoy's recommendation is to receive the homelessness ad hoc committee update, which we had tonight, adopt the resolution declaring a shelter crisis in Thousand Oaks. Also, to approve a memorandum of understanding on Ventura countywide homelessness with the county of Ventura, Camarillo, Fillmore, Moore Park, Port Juaniemi, Santa Paula, Simi Valley, Ventura and Oxnard. And again, this is a long-term plan. And we haven't had our last meeting on this, and we won't have it for a while. We will continue to work on this issue.
All right, Ms. Bill de La Pena moves to approve the recommendations and adopt the report. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Adam.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, cities all across California are struggling with this issue, Santa Barbara, Santa Monica, Ventura, Los Angeles. And it's an issue here in Thousand Oaks, but and we may not be able to solve it, but we can manage it. And some of the things that struck me in the report, and certainly as has been said here over and over again, don't give to panhandlers, give to your social service organizations instead. I like the signage that the chief puts out to try to get that message across to people. I like the idea of potentially keeping, if we could get some funding, fund it to the churches, the synagogues, the mosques. I mean, there's built-in shelter right there, and there's dozens of them throughout the city, obviously. And maybe we need to take, next time around in the CBDG funding and the SSVF funding, we need to take a closer look at maybe pushing a little more money towards this situation than we have in the past so it doesn't get any greater than it already is. And also, as far as our public spaces, we need to keep them maintained and designed properly so all people in Thousand Oaks can enjoy them. And so I hope that the committee pursues some of these things and continues to work on this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. If there's no more comments, Ms. Rodriguez, prepare the vote, please. Recommendation is for one, two and three.
The motion carries five zero.
And that is approved. We're going to move to item nine B. That's another departmental report on the Clean Power Alliance Customer Default Electricity Offering, and Mr. Spurgeon is going to handle that as well. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Council Dr. Helen Cox is also with me on the dais regarding this item. This is an opportunity tonight to reconsider the renewable energy content for our default setting as we roll into obtaining energy from the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California. So back in 2017, that entity was formed initially with the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors and just a couple of cities in the LA basin. Over 2017, including ourselves, in December, a number of agencies joined the CPA. And as the, as that entity rolled out its policies, procedures and whatnot, it asked for member agencies to set a default renewable content percentage for when the CPA would begin to supply energy to customers. That was, that decision was made by this city council in February, and the selection was 50% renewables. Though I'll mention in a minute the options there. Beginning in June this year, the CPA actually started serving about 30,000 businesses in LA County and a couple of cities with energy. And as, as rates were set by the entity, the option was given to all the member agencies to reconsider or to select their default setting initially if they hadn't already. And that needs to be done by the end of this month. So in, starting next year in February is when our city residential customers will begin receiving energy from the CPA and then in May, our businesses. By next fall, fall of 2019, we believe that there will be another opportunity to make a change should any of the agencies so desire. There'll be a number of notices, as you can see here, given to our city residential and business customers, both by CPA and by city. And we can talk more about that if you need to. Here are the 29 cities and the county of LA and the county of Ventura that make up the Clean Power Alliance. This is a organization that is bound by a joint powers authority agreement. That was what was approved back in December last year by Thousand Oaks. This is, I believe, the largest entity of its kind in California. There are a number of others, probably about 20 of them throughout the state. Ultimately, the CPA will serve over a million customers across Southern California. So how this works is everybody's energy bill really has two parts to it. There's a lot of add-ons, but it's two main parts, and that is where you buy your energy from, where it is, where it is created, where it is produced, and there's a cost to that. And then getting it delivered to your home. So there is a, an infrastructure system. And so each, each energy bill has about, has those two elements to it. What would be different when the CPA begins service is that source, the source side of things, where the energy comes from, where it's purchased from, would come from Clean Power Alliance. Edison would continue to deliver and do a number of other things. And in fact, here's what would stay the same. There's energy, the grid that delivers the power, both locally and some of it regionally, Edison would continue that maintenance and we would pay them for that cost. They would provide, still provide some rebates and incentives. You start and stop service still by calling Edison, and then you get one bill each month from Edison for those costs. The difference is, or what's new, is that there's, there'll be a line item on that bill for CPA where you're buying your energy from. That, we believe, and obviously many others in the state have believed that competition would be good in that arena. Edison actually produces very little of the power that they deliver now. That's from deregulation years and years ago. And so there's a market out there. And that market is growing in renewable sources, whether that's wind, solar, hydro, other types of renewable energy sources. So competition will be good, there'll be greater choice of energy providers. The CPA will provide higher renewable content choices. And all of that will result in lower greenhouse gas emissions, which is an important goal that the state has set, and it's something that many agencies, including Thousand Oaks, it's an environmental leadership concern. And I like the last item here, and that is future incentives and programs such as the CPA being able to fund local solar and/or wind projects that currently Edison does not able, is not doing. Here are the three choices through CPA. These represent percentages of renewable energy as part of the total energy provided. The 50%, by the way, the state has through several bills along the last several years, set requirements, mandates for the renewable content for energy that is provided throughout the state. Currently, that is, I believe, 29% this year. It goes up to 33% in 2020. Again, these are state mandates. By 2030, that needs to be 60%, 60% renewable of all the energy delivered in the state. And then 2040, 100%. So the state has set a goal and a mandate to reach 100%. The 50% choice, which the city has previously selected, meets the goal like eight years earlier than what the state would mandate. Should the city council select 100% or change to 100%, that, that meets the state standard or the state requirement like 22 years early. You can see that there's some cost impacts to these choices. The 36 and the 50% choices provide a discount to what people are paying Edison today. The 100% would be a moderate premium, seven to nine percent over what Edison pays. However, if people are actually paying Edison for 100% portfolio, the CPA's costs would actually be five to 10% less than that. There's no impact to the CARE customers, that's the California Alternative Rates for Energy, the lower income customers, if there's 100% selected. Here's what some of the, I don't think this is the full list of everybody, maybe it is. But highlighted here are our county neighbors in terms of the county and other cities that are part of CPA and what the selections have been to date. And so you can see there's quite a mix between a number of agencies that have already selected 100%. Many have, many are at 50 and some also, of course, at 36. So recently, the county of Ventura selected 100% for residential customers. City Ventura recently went to 100, and Ojai has been at 100 for some time. So why would we want to, well, first of all, we have this opportunity, and we thought that, and Councilmember Claudia Bill de La Pena is your designated director on the CPA. Myself and Dr. Cox are alternate directors. So this was brought forward by your designated directors as an opportunity to make a, make a change, to go from 50 where we're at today to 100. So some of the, just kind of summarized here why we would want to do that and perhaps some of the considerations for staying at 50%. The 100% as a default obviously would result in a greater number of city customers staying at 100 because once, a lot of people just don't bother to change. So whatever the default is, they go into it and they stay with it. It provides another opportunity for the city to maintain its leadership on climate change and other environmental things. There's been a very recent United Nations report that has come out, and it's pretty sobering in terms of the need to act now to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to try and curb the increase in temperatures on our planet and the, frankly, the devastating impacts that could come from that. Some of those we are starting to see now in terms of drought and increased fires and some level of sea level, levels rising, water shortages and whatnot. And one of the things about 100%, again, as I mentioned, there's no rate impact to CARE customers. 50% has lower electric bills than the 100%. I think that's kind of self-explanatory. There's still some emission reduction at 50, it's 25%. I note that at, at 100%, there's a 60% reduction, and that's of the emissions produced by energy, energy generation throughout the state. We might get some negative attention because of the increase going to 100%. And of course, no matter what you do, Edison's rates are probably going to go up next year, and that could compound that. However, it's very easy to address residents who might not like a change, and that is they can opt out. They can opt out initially, they can opt out at any time. They can change from 100 to 50 to 36. Frankly, they can do that now at 50. If we go in at 50, they can change to 100 or 36. So lots of opportunities for adjustments for people. And lastly, just, you know, again, the city's environmental leadership has been manifested in so many ways, whether it's renewable energy already that we have at Hill Canyon Treatment Plant through our solar and cogen projects. We use recycled tire rubber in all of our paving. Those 51 miles we just did all have recycled rubber in them. Keeping tires out of landfills, we have a LEED-certified household hazardous waste facility that's been up and running, very successful. And almost a third of our fleet is, is alternative fuel, low carbon emission. So I know that there's been quite a bit of interest. that's been up and running, very successful, and almost a third of our fleet is, is alternative fuel, low, low-carbon emission. So, I know that there's been quite a bit of interest. We have, I think, almost 27, 26 or 7 letters and emails that have been submitted in favor of the going to 100%. Those are all in the supplementals. I think that's it for my report. Perhaps our director, Bill de la Peña, on the CPA board might want to sum up before questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Questions or further comments, Mr. Bill de la Peña?
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Mrs. Spurgeon and Dr. Cox, thank you for the presentation and the research that you have done. Being members of the CPA, the Clean Power Alliance, really is something very exciting, not only for the city of Thousand Oaks, but really for all of Southern California. And Thousand Oaks was the second city in Ventura County to join CPA last fall, almost a year ago. And the city of Westlake Village, I believe, two weeks ago, joined CPA as well. We have now 30 cities, I believe, if not more, and, and growing, because people realize that cities need to lead by example. We need to set the example, we need to take action regarding our environment. And the fact that residents will have control over which tier they want to use, I think, makes this decision, for me at least, very, very easy. As was already stated by Mr. Spurgeon, residents can go lower, certainly if they want to. They can do that via an email, via a phone call, or just a plain, regular mail. But the fact that the city of Thousand Oaks has the option or the opportunity to reduce gas house emissions by 60%, going 100% renewable energy, I think is very, very exciting. And we have been leading by example with our water treatment plant and other examples that Mr. Spurgeon has mentioned. So, I feel, I'm very excited about this. I feel that this is a wonderful opportunity to, to show leadership and to do something good for the environment and protect the environment for our children and our children's children and generations beyond that. And I think, yes, the decision will have to be made by the end of the month, and our next meeting is not until later, I believe. Is it next year? Is it?
No, November 13th.
It is November 13th? Okay. November 13th. So, that's the reason why this is coming to the council a little late, because they have a deadline of October 30th. And, and Dr. Cox, Mrs. Spurgeon, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions. Oh, I think what was important to mention is that the 100% renewable rate by CPA is higher than that of Southern California Edison. I'm sorry, is lower than that of California Edison. I misspoke. Southern California Edison's 100% renewable rate is higher than that of CPA.
Clear as mud. Okay. Mr. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Jay, you mentioned there's a million customers in this Clean Power Alliance at this point? Did you, did I hear that right?
Well, ultimately, when CPA starts providing service to all of its member agencies, it could, it'd be 100, about a million or more.
I'm assuming that that could probably grow as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As more, more agencies join, sure.
Okay. So, when it comes to clean power, wind, solar, hydro, is there enough to go around? And is it going to be reliable?
I, the simple answer is yes.
Plenty of solar, plenty of wind, plenty of hydro. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Thank you. It's good to live in Southern California where there's lots of sun to provide that solar energy. My question would be, I seem to remember back in February, was it, when we voted on this before, that there was a lot of discussion about where we were going to fall, and I thought I remember thinking that, I thought 100% was a good deal, because that allowed our residents to opt for 100% or something less. I'm just curious, wasn't the staff recommendation back then to go with 50%? And if that's the case, why didn't we do that then?
At that time, we have a little more certainty about the rates now, and the tiers have been finalized. At the time, it seemed a good kind of balance between getting some cost savings and being able to get a cleaner power mix. Since then, we've had the benefit of being able to see what the county has done, what the, what other cities in the county, what other cities in CPA have done. And also, I think that the impact of the latest climate change reports, both from the state, which came out in August, and the international report, which just came out a couple of weeks ago, have really emphasized the need to act now, not just even a year, two years, three years from now. And so, I think the urgency of the situation has become much more evident. And so, anything that the city can do to play their part and lead, help, help our residents and businesses understand that urgency is very important.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, our residents have always been on the front end of environmental stewardship here, and I would think that, and given the number of emails that I've received in the past, oh, I'm going to say 72 hours, there's no doubt in my mind which direction I'm going. So, I just was curious why we, but now that we understand a little bit better, it makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Bill de la Peña?
Just to augment what Dr. Cox said, we are, CPA is basically a startup company, and we were just trying to figure, get all of our ducks in a row, trying to figure out, you know, the pricing, the tiers, the legal aspects of it all, and we now have a clearer picture and can say with certainty then that 100% renewable is really the way to go. Oh, and South Pasadena last week also went 100%.
Mr. McCoy?
Helen, I just had a quick question. Does EPA subsidize this?
The EPA? No.
With federal government in any way?
No, it's completely independent. It's due to state regulation that allows these community choice energy programs to form.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions, we have two public comment cards. Our first is Kevin Matthews. After Mr. Matthews would be Michelle Ellison. Good evening, sir.
Hello. Oh, good evening. Yeah, thank you all. Thanks for the opportunity. I, if I knew the state of play on the, on the council, I perhaps wouldn't come to speak, but I just, I wanted to, to come and be sure that, that we're going to follow through on 100%. I'm a 13-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I've been working at California Lutheran University for seven years, and I serve on the Sustainability Committee there. I think this is a fantastic opportunity to send a signal to the community about, about where we stand on, on renewable energy, and where we think other leaders in the community should, should stand, and, and all residents, except for those who, who wish to opt out, and perhaps who need to, although it's wonderful that the, that this particular plan doesn't appear to impact low-income consumers. So, yeah, just, I'll, sorry, I tried to be very brief. I, I think this is a great opportunity for us. It's a, it's a way to really reduce the carbon footprint locally. If you've seen that IPCC report, you would want 150% if you could get it, you know? We need to put the, put the, the pressure on to, to bring down our, our carbon usage, and communities that can do that should be in that game. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michelle Ellison?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Ellison, a resident of Ojai, serve on the board of the Clean Power Alliance, representing the city of Ojai. As you may recall, I was here just two weeks ago speaking on this during public comment, so it's fantastic that you're considering making your renewable energy default at 100%. This is a really exciting opportunity, and I hope you appreciate the significance of the decision before you now. There are now eight of the 31 agencies in Clean Power Alliance that have chosen 100%, including recently the city of Ventura, which was unanimous 7 to 0 vote. And I can't tell you how great that room felt that night. There was just a lot of joy in the, in the room. So, it was, it was beautiful. There were South Pasadena last week, Rolling Hills Estates, Culver City, Santa Monica, West Hollywood, and Ojai. Ventura County has selected 100% as well, making history as the first county in California, and indeed, our country, to do so. Together, these eight communities are setting a new standard for how local governments can take immediate and meaningful action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It would be wonderful to include Thousand Oaks among this group of truly visionary leaders. The importance of this decision has become especially relevant in light of the alarming news, which we've been discussing already from the UN IPCC, which just issued that dire warning that governments at all levels everywhere must take, quote, "rapid, far-reaching, and unprecedented changes to dramatically cut emissions within the next 12 years." We do not have the luxury of time anymore to take incremental steps. The magnitude of the crisis necessitates swift action at the public policy level. You, as elected representatives of Thousand Oaks, have a precedent-setting opportunity before you now to do the right thing on the local level by setting the renewable default at 100%. To reiterate some of the important considerations I've shared with you previously, the public wants cleaner energy. Defaults have immense potential to affect social outcomes. If we want to encourage cleaner energy, then our defaults should support that. If we set the tier lower, that's mostly what we'll get, and is that really all the clean energy we want? 50% is still a long way from 100%. Regardless of the default level, customers can choose another plan at any time, no one is locked into anything. To keep the cost difference in perspective, my family's monthly electricity bill averages $60, so the 100% plan would just mean $5 more. And say for a larger home with air conditioning and a pool with a monthly bill of 300, it's just $24 more. That's not very much. For those who, even this small increase would create a financial burden, they can opt down to another plan with cost savings. As has been mentioned, CARE and other low-income customers will have the plan benefit at no additional cost. The 50% renewable default still contains 50% dirty energy. Pollution has associated costs, which must be factored into our decision-making. It can't just be about saving a buck or two in the short term. And while you could change the default in the future, it would be more difficult than getting it right from the get-go. Now is the best time to do this, before service begins. Renewable energy is now readily available and affordable, we just need to start choosing it. And lastly, this is the most tangible, immediate, and easy way for you to reduce your community's carbon footprint significantly. Thank you, and I hope you make a thoughtful choice and choose 100% clean energy.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. That concludes our public speakers on this item. It's a departmental report, and we will entertain a motion at this point. Ms. Bill de la Peña?
Well, given that we have major employers such as Amgen, who have LEED-certified buildings and are very environmentally conscious, as are many other biotech companies, I would like to, for the city of Thousand Oaks to adopt the 100% renewable rate, energy rate, that would be my motion.
All right. Ms. Bill de la Peña moves the staff recommendation. Discussion on her motion. Mr. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Just that I will support the motion, given Thousand Oaks' strong environmental track record, whether it's Hill Canyon, where we generate all our own power there, completely sustainable, or Tree City almost every year, I think every year, actually. We have a fleet that primarily runs on compressed natural gas and electricity. We've always been very environmentally conscious. I think this is a great step for the city, shows some real leadership. The rate pairs can participate, they have levels of participation, so they have some flexibility in how they can participate in this, and it's not going to affect low-income people either, so I think it's a great way to go. I'll support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing done. Ms. Rodriguez, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. We will now move to the remainder of the agenda. Items 10, 11, we have no items. Item 12, we have no reports on outside committee assignments. Move to item 13, that's the city manager report. Mr. Powers?
Thank you so much, Mayor Fox. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on the 13th of November. On that evening, you will have public hearings on our animal control ordinance and fee update, an update on our street vendor ordinance, and you will have a recap report on the National League of Cities City Summit, which I know Councilmember Price and I will be attending down in Los Angeles. It's a rare occasion that, that conference is being held relatively locally. I will actually be out on vacation that evening, so it will be Ingrid Hardy's first opportunity in the hot seat here, so please ask that you take it easy on her.
All right. We have a no-close session tonight? Ms. Noonan? All right. Then we will adjourn to our regularly scheduled council meeting on November 13th, 2018. And again, tonight, we're adjourning in memory of Irish John Gore, longtime community resident and civic leader. We are adjourned.